It's one o'clock, so we'll bring this meeting to order. Douglas County Board of Commissioners and the Audit Committee Special Joint Public Meeting. And it is November 29, 2021, 1:00 p.m. And we'll start off with Commissioner Gardner giving the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you'd all please stand.
Join me in saluting the greatest flag on this earth. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Gardner. We'll open with public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker unless additional time is granted by the Board Chairman. The Board of Commissioners use timing lights to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. You will see a green light when you begin and then a yellow light, which indicates that you have 30 seconds left and should conclude your comments. Once that light turns red, please sit down. In addition to opening public comment, public comment will also be taken on administrative agenda items that are identified as for possible action. In closing public comment, it is requested that members of the public provide public comment on those agenda items that are identified as for possible action. When those agenda items are considered and not during opening public comments, at this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and the control of the Board of County Commissioners. Public comment is now open. Anybody from the audience? Terry?
Terry Willoughby for the record. I have a short video to play from the Government Finance Officers Association that we received today. And I'll bring that up.
My honor to recognize you for receiving GF Way's Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Receiving this award demonstrates your finance team's commitment to preparing an annual financial report that is organized, readable, and transparent. Meeting the high standards required to receive... Greetings from the Government Finance Officers Association. I'm Chris Morley, GF Way's Executive Director. It is my honor to recognize you for receiving GF Way's Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Receiving this award demonstrates your finance team's commitment to preparing an annual financial report that is organized, readable, and transparent. Meeting the high standards required to receive this award is a mark of distinction, of which you should be very proud. And I congratulate you and your staff. Thank you, and congratulations again on this impressive achievement.
I apologize, they're going to fix that on the back end so we can move on with the rest of the agenda. And I can play that later.
All right, Terry, we can do that. There is no consent calendar, so we'll open with the approval of the agenda. For possible action, approval of the proposed agenda, the Board of Commissioners reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner, to combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and to remove items from the agenda or delay discussion relating to items on the agenda. Seeing none of that, we'll go ahead and start with item number one. It's titled "In Finance." "For Presentation Only. Presentation of the Douglas County Internal Audit Program Update from September 16, 2021 through November 15, 2021." Mark Staraka, you have the floor.
Great, good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hope all is well and everyone had a great holiday weekend. So, very brief update on the internal audit program. So, we have five projects that comprise the internal audit program for FY 2122. Two have been completed, which are the CARES Act Compliance Testing, which was presented to the Audit Committee, and the Library Organizational Study, which was presented to the Library Board. We have two projects that are underway. One is the Fixed Asset Internal Controls Testing, and the other is the Airport Operational Review. Both are on schedule and moving forward smoothly. And then we have one project that has yet to be started, which is a P Card Review. And in your next agenda item, we're going to propose a change to that particular project as part of the FY 2122 Internal Audit Program. And then last comment in terms of status update. Since our last Audit Committee meeting, we've had three reports received through the Fraud, Waste, and Abuse or Ethics Hotline. All three of those reports were received via the website that's provided for providing such reports as categorized by the reporters. Two were compliance and ethics reports. One was a human resources-related report. All three were of the nature that we were able to forward those reports to appropriate management to look into. And two of those have been closed, and one is currently under review by management. And so that is our internal audit program status report. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the Board? Mr. Staraka? This is Commissioner Engels, can you hear me?
Are you sure, Ken? Good afternoon.
Yes, sir, happy Thanksgiving.
Same to you.
You're a financial guy. I'm going to put you on the spot. What is your forecast for inflation next year?
Well, you really want to be talking to economists, but I think our inflation is going to... Boy, if we're going to pick a number, I would say greater than four or five percent.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, place your bets. Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Are there any further questions or comments from anybody? All right, thank you, sir, we appreciate the update, and we'll move on. Item number two. "For Possible Action. Discussion to Approve Modifications of the Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Internal Audit Program to Substitute a Review of Douglas County's Payroll Process for Purchasing Card Internal Controls Testing." And this will be open for public comment at the end. Ms. Willoughby, you have the floor.
Terry Willoughby, for the record, we had reviewed our original internal control review report from 2019 and gone back through and looked at what we hadn't touched yet. And payroll was one of those areas that we felt needed some more review and that it was a more urgent program than the purchasing card review. We made several changes in policies and procedures in the purchasing card program, so we felt comfortable delaying that to next year, but would really like to look at some of the manual processes in payroll and have them reviewed by the internal auditors. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the audience? Mr. Maxwell, do you have any questions?
David Maxwell, Chairman of the Audit Committee, for the record. No, I have no questions, but I'd like to ask my committee, if there are any.
Tim McCoy for the record, no questions.
Terry Rankin for the record. I have a question on the chart from Mr. Staraka. Under the P Cars Internal Control, it says, "Proposed to Replace with the Constable Extra Duty Pay Audit." So, is that included in the request for the payroll processing?
Terry Willoughby for the record, that is correct. There are several items that are considered extra pay outside normal payroll, your set salary or hourly wage, and that's what we have in the internal auditor's review.
Okay, thank you.
So, that's... Any other questions? All right, then the Audit Committee is giving a... Have no further questions.
Is there any... Any questions on Zoom?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Marsha Johnson for the record. At this time, there's no public comment online.
Seeing that, we'll bring it back to the Board for any questions or comments. Commissioners have any questions or comments? Seeing none. This is an action item. Do we here have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve a modification of the Fiscal Year 202122 Internal Audit Program to substitute a review of Douglas County's payroll processes for purchasing card internal controls testing.
Seconding motion. We have a motion by Commissioner Rice, a second by Commissioner Noasad. All those commissioners in favor, signify by voting, saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I guess Commissioner Turkanyan is not available for voting. Is he online? Okay, the motion carries 4-0, thank you. And we'll move on to item number three. "For Possible Public Action. Review and Discussion to Accept the Douglas County Fiscal Year 2021 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report (ACFR). This will be open for public comment afterwards. Ms. Willoughby, you have the floor.
Thank you, Terry Willoughby, for the record. We are pleased to present our results of our fiscal year 2021. And I have, on Zoom, we have David Showalter and Chris Ng from the firm of I. Bailey, and I'll turn that over to them for presentation, and I'll follow up with my presentation after that.
Good morning, members of the Audit Committee. This is David Showalter with I. Bailey. I also have Chris Ng joining us as well. And we are going to cover the results of the June 30, 2021, audit of the financial statements for County of Douglas. And I am going to share my screen. So, this presentation is going to discuss the results of the fiscal year 2021 audit. So, again, for the record, my name is David Showalter with I. Bailey, and I am the Audit Partner in charge of the financial statement audit for Douglas County. Also, that our audit team was also made up of James Ramsey, who was the technical and QC Audit Partner. So, James's role was to step in and review, pretty much provide a second review of the financial statements prior to the issuance of the report. Chris Ng, who's the Audit Manager, served as the Audit Manager on the audit. And Chris's responsibility was really to oversee the audit from kind of the beginning to the end and certainly had a lot of involvement this year with this year's audit. And Chris is our third year doing the audit. And so, Chris is... Over the last three years, we've certainly have gathered and gained a lot of knowledge and experience over the county, and it's just nice that Chris has been with us that entire way as well. So, Leila El-Sumari was our Senior Audit Associate, and she helped Chris with the audit this year. So, the scope of our audit, and I know we discussed this at our last discussion a few months back, is to perform the audit of the fiscal year 21 financial statements for the county. That is the annual comprehensive financial report. And so, that name has changed since last year, where it used to be a comprehensive annual financial report. And recently, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board has modified that name just to be a little more politically correct. Also, we're conducting an audit of the county's federal programs, and that will be conducted under 2 CFR 200, or the Single Audit. And that audit is ongoing, and we expect to have that audit completed sometime around January or February. So, our plan, scope, and timing, I think this is just an update from what we previously communicated to you in our last discussion. What we've updated on this particular chart is the issuance date. And so, planning an interim phase of the audit was conducted in June. We conducted the final phase of the audit in the September, October months, and we issued the report on November 24, 2021, which is a few days earlier than last year. So, we're getting a little bit better each year. So, we appreciate the county and all their help, and Terry and her team, and everyone's hard effort to get the audit done prior to that November 30 deadline. So, I was thankful we were able to get it issued before Thanksgiving. So, it's always a nice target to have the audit done before that Thanksgiving timeframe so everyone can enjoy the holiday. As I mentioned, the Single Audit Fieldwork date is scheduled for this December and January, and we're hopeful to have that wrapped up by January and February this upcoming year. Just a little update on that. The Office of Management and Budget issues an annual compliance supplement for the Single Audit every year, and we're expecting a few addendums to that supplement, which could have an impact on the county. So, I think that had to do with some ARPA funding as well. So, we're pending an update to the compliance supplement so that we can utilize that for the audit, for the 2021 Single Audit. So, we're expecting to have an updated addendum here, hopefully before the end of the calendar year. So, our responsibility under generally accepted auditing standards is to express opinions on the county's financial statements. Just for your information, the county's financial statements are prepared by management, and they are management's financial statements. And so, they take full responsibility for the fair presentation of those financial statements. And our responsibility is to come in as your independent auditor and audit those financial statements to ensure that they're fairly presented in all material respects in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. Our audit provides reasonable, but not absolute, assurance on the fair presentation of the financial statements. And our audit does not relieve management of its responsibilities. So, again, these are management's financial statements, and we provide an independent opinion as to their fair presentation. For the Single Audit, we also want to express an opinion on compliance with the applicable major federal programs compliance. So, when we do get to the point of issuing that report, that opinion will be based on the results of our audit of the financial... of the program compliance requirements, and that we will express an opinion on compliance. So, for the audit of the financial statements, which I believe you have a copy of the financial statements attached to your package, our opinion expresses an unmodified opinion, or we would refer to that as a clean opinion. Now, we do have an emphasis on matter in our opinion, and that emphasis on matter is related to the implementation of Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 84. So, just a new accounting pronouncement that was effective this year that did result in some presentation disclosure and financial statement modification. But nonetheless, there is no exceptions related to our opinion. This is just calling out to the fact that there was a new accounting pronouncement issued. So, the opinion is a clean opinion, and so that's good news for the county. And so, again, a lot of hard work from Terry and her team to work through the year-end audit and to prepare the final trial balances and getting everything ready for us for the audit. And so, we're thankful for them to be able to get through that in a timely manner and to help us meet the deadlines by November 30. So, at the conclusion of our audit, as we're conducting today, we have a responsibility to communicate certain matters to you as the Audit Committee. That includes our ethics and independence, qualitative aspects of accounting policies, and any new accounting disclosures that are required. Any difficulties encountered during the audit, or any uncorrected or corrected misstatements, disagreements with management, certain management representations, and any consultations with other accountants. So, the next few slides, we'll hit on a few of those bullet points. Our ethics and independence, we've complied with all the relevant ethical requirements regarding independence. One of the roles that we play with respect to the audit of the financial statements is that we do assist management in the preparation of the financial statements. So, we do have to ensure that we are independent of the county and that any of the work that we're doing with respect to the preparation of the financial statements, that we... There aren't any threats to our independence with respect to the preparation of the financial statements. So, that's one other reason why we have another partner who also assists with reviewing those financial statements after it goes through my review and Chris's review, just so that we have multiple eyes reviewing those reports in addition to management reviewing and taking responsibility for the reports. Significant accounting policy, so one item to note this year is that the county did adopt GASV's Statement Number 84, which is titled fiduciary activities. That was effective at the beginning of the fiscal year, July 1, 2020, and this resulted in a reclassification of certain funds from custodial or agency funds to governmental funds. And it also modified the reporting of those custodial funds from an assets equals liabilities presentation to a net position presentation. So, if you were to compare the financial statements for the agency funds and the custodial funds, you'll see that there is just a change in the presentation as well as there's a new statement of changes in fiduciary net position that's been added to the report. So, and really, this statement just provided additional clarity on what are fiduciary activities when the county acts as an agent and holds assets on behalf of other parties. Just ensuring that those assets that the county is holding and reporting in those custodial funds is, in fact, assets that belong to a third party or a third-party individual or another governmental agency or individual. Or, and it's not necessarily the county's funds that are being held in those agency funds. So, the county did implement that as effective fiscal year 2020 and 2021. Significant estimates dealing with actuarial determinations affecting the net pension liability related deferred inflows and outflows of resources, pension expense and disclosures with respect to the valuation of claims liability. So, these are what we refer to as the significant estimates that are in the financial statements. And the majority of these estimates do have actuarial assumptions that are applied to them. So, our role is just to ensure that the assumptions and the estimates appear reasonable in all material respects. With respect to misstatements, we did have some corrected misstatements noted in the audit related to cash liabilities and revenues. I do believe there's a letter that is attached in your package that does outline each of those adjustments. Some were related to reclassifications, and some were related to adjustments that needed to be made to the income statement. Management has corrected all of those misstatements, and they are reflected in the financial statements. As far as we know, management did not consult with any other accountants with respect to the audit. We did not have any difficulties with the audit this year. I would have to say the audit went really smooth. And given the circumstances with COVID and working remotely again this year, I think we were able to, again, knock a few days off the audit timeline this year compared to last year. So, again, everyone worked hard to meet those deadlines, and we're thankful that we're able to get the audit done for you guys before Thanksgiving. And no disagreements with management this year. We did have a few findings with respect to the audit. Some of these findings have been communicated again. These were findings that we had pointed out from our first year doing the audit, and some of them are repeat findings that the county is still working through, just working through the implementation. And so, we're hopeful that these will be implemented in the near term. Findings number one through five in our report are the repeat findings. And you'll find these findings located in the last pages of the annual comprehensive financial report. And then, we did have another repeat finding with respect to capital assets. We recommended the county implement policy and procedures over the reconciliation of the capital assets roll forward. So, part of the year in close is going through the accounting system and capturing the end-of-the-year balances for your capital assets and then providing a roll forward of those capital assets from the beginning of the year with the additions and the deletions, and then the end-of-the-year balances, and providing that for the financial statement disclosures. So, just a recommendation to have that scheduled reviewed prior to providing it to the auditors. And the budget monitoring, which is a new finding for this year, we just recommend the county perform a regular review over their budget to actual adjustments made to the system. I think we did note... to actual adjustments made to the system. I think we did note that there was one individual that does have the ability to make changes to those budgeted amounts within the system, and just making sure that there's adequate review supporting those changes that are made during the year. And two additional findings that are new for this year with respect to the town of Gardinerville, we noted areas of concern with respect to the segregation of duties in the revenue generation cycle. We recommended that the town management review its current policies and procedures to ensure proper segregation of duties over over the revenue generation cycle, documenting the including documentation of the prepare and approver of certain journal entries and transactions to make sure that there's evidence of approval. So those types of revenue generation transactions could be a cash receipt or or a journal entry that's being recorded in the in the accounting system, and just making sure that there are multiple individuals involved in that process. So we don't have want to have a situation where there's one individual who's preparing a journal entry and recording their own journal entries in the accounting system. Best practices, of course, is to have one individual prepare the journal entry and another individual review it and enter that journal entry into the accounting system so that you have a separation of duties. Accounts payable is another area that we identified internal control deficiency. We recommended the town management implement policy procedures to ensure the preparation and approval processes of AP vouchers are segregated and documented. Again, another area where multiple individuals should be involved in this process, just to make sure that those transactions that are being approved for payment involve multiple individuals. One individual can prepare it, and another individual should be reviewing it and approving And in the report, our generally our governmental accounting, I'm sorry, our our government audit standards report, which is attached to the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, that's a mouthful, management did provide their responses to each of these findings, and they do have their corrective action plan as well as their date of action. So if there's any questions with respect to any of the corrective action and and management's plan of action, Teri can certainly provide details to that. And then looking ahead, new audit and accounting standards. In the current year, as I mentioned, we implemented GASB Statement Number 84, as well as GASB Statement Number 90. Number 90 did not have an impact on the financial statements because the county did not have any of these types of transactions. Looking ahead to next year, one of the more significant accounting pronouncements that will be implemented next year is GASB Statement Number 87, dealing with the accounting and financial reporting for leases. Now, there's already been there already is an accounting standard with respect to leases, which goes all the way back to Financial Accounting Standards Board Number 13, and the GASB codified that in GASB Statement 62. So what this accounting standard is going to change is the reporting of your operating leases, which in past has been reported as an operating expense. And when you make the the lease, when you make the lease payment for those types of leases, again, there's under under the FASB Statement Number 13, there were there were some criteria that would classify a lease as a capital lease or financing arrangement versus an operating lease. Under GASB 87, all the leases are going to be tracked and accounted for as essentially a borrowing arrangement where you are leasing an asset as a right to use. You'll have an asset on the books along with an obligation or liability offsetting that that right to use asset. So this will impact the the balance sheet primarily, as well as some of the note disclosures. So one of the things that this does present a little bit of a challenge for for governments is just the decentralized nature of of governments, and especially a county government such as Douglas County, and making sure that you can identify and capture all of the operating leases and and lease agreements that you have. So completeness is certainly going to be a a challenge. But that'll be the first step is to go through and catalog all of your all of your leases, and then identify of those leases, which ones are going to fall under the scope of of GASB 87. The nice thing about GASB 87 is it did identify some initial criteria that any leases that have a one-year or less term can be excluded from from reporting. So so as long as the it has a 12 months or less of a of a lease term, it can be excluded. So this accounting standard is going to be effective starting actually July 1, 2021. So the the start date has just has passed us. So that's that is the date that we will evaluate what operating leases and other leases that the county has. And and currently, the county does report its capital leases in its financial statements, and it does report operating leases as a footnote disclosure. So there is a starting point with respect to cataloging and coming up with a population of leases. But again, the county would need to go through and determine if there are any other types of agreements that maybe look like lease agreements, but maybe have not been identified as lease agreements. So so it does open up some opportunity to go through and look at some other types of arrangements that may exist that potentially could be a lease that maybe has never been considered a lease in the past. And there's a there's a complimentary accounting standard that will be effective in 2022, which will account for subscription-based information technology arrangements. And that is going to require the county to capture any agreements that it may have with maybe a software provider where you're you're leasing an asset that's really just like software, for instance, or maybe it's an accounting system that's being hosted by a third party. And in those types of arrangements, more than likely, they'll be treated as leases as well. And the next year, we have GASB Statement Number 89, accounting for interest costs incurred before the end of the construction period. So this was a an accounting standard that required the capitalization of interest. And for governments, that would only apply to your proprietary funds. And so the GASB is is eliminating the requirement to capitalize the interest on interest that's incurred on bonds that are used to finance capital projects, as well as interest that is incurred on your capital projects when you're using your own funds to finance those projects. So so the the requirement to capitalize interest costs on constructed assets is is going to be eliminated with GASB 89. And then looking ahead, we have GASB 91, which is requiring some additional disclosure on conduit debt obligations. 92 is an omnibus, which is a accounting standard that goes back and makes certain revisions to previously issued accounting standards. GASB 93 deals with the replacement of LIBOR. And so there was a change in the LIBOR, the use of LIBOR. And so this accounting standard is just reflecting that that industry change that is taking place. GASB 94 deals with public-private and public-public partnerships. We've had a an existing standard, GASB Statement 60, on the books for several years, dealing with service concession arrangements. And so GASB 94 is going to go back and make some revisions to that accounting standard. GASB 96 is what I just mentioned earlier, subscription-based information technology arrangements, which will require the the accounting and financial reporting for those types of arrangements where maybe you have leased some software from a third party. GASB 97 deals with certain component unit criteria and accounting for financial reporting for IRC Section 457 plans and other compensation plans. This is going to change the requirement on how to report certain contributory pension plans. And then GASB 98. The GASB adopted accounting standard to change the name of the financial report from the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report to the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. So that required an actual GASB standard change in order to make that change. So and the county and the county has early implemented that, by the way, by changing the name of its report. So there's a lot of new accounting pronouncements coming up in the next few years. And I know the GASB is working on some additional standards here in the near future. So stay tuned. Next year, we'll be able to update you on any new pronouncements that come out between now and and next June. So. So with that, any questions with respect to the audit this year, or any specific questions with respect to the finances that we can answer?
On that note, are there any questions from the audience? Is there anybody on Zoom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Damian, for the record. There is no one online for on Zoom for public comment.
Thank you, Ann. See no public comments? Bring it back to the board. Any members of the board have a Any questions from the Audit Committee?
Yes. So I'd comment on this. The audit findings are encouraging. As I recall, over the past few years, they've been up around the mid twenties for this on the audit, actual audit report. And I'm very pleased to see it come down to only nine this year. And I think that management is should be applauded for that. Are there any other comments from the Audit Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Teri Rankin. Just just information for the board, if this helps you. I noticed you changed insurance carriers for your property and casualty coverage. That's fine. If if you do that frequently, though, you want to watch for your tail on your claims made policies and your workers' comp coverage. So it's fine to shop, but kind of pay attention to that. It's just a line item in the report. There's no deficiency whatsoever for changing it, but that's something to keep in mind for the future.
Teri, would you be available when we get to that point? Thanks, Teri.
Thank you.
Any other?
And to McCoy, for the record, I have no other comments. The report was very well laid out, easy to read, easy to. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. With that, there's no other comments from the Audit Committee.
In that case, we'll bring it back to the board for any further comments or questions. Mr. Commissioner Rice?
Just one comment. It seems like every board and commission that I sit on deals with IBALE. Are they that good?
Teri Willoughby, for the record, there are many branches and offices of IBALE, and I would say ours are that good.
Thank you. I have with all the reports that I hear and see, they do a, in my opinion, a fantastic job. And thank you for all the work you put into this.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. These questions are for Ms. Willoughby, not for the auditor itself. But first of all, I want to thank the Audit Committee for joining us today, and I hope they appreciate and understand the important role they play in our county. Certainly not overlooked by this particular commissioner. So thank you for your attendance. I did receive two calls from the public asking two different questions of which one I was able to, I believe I was able to answer correctly, and the other one I I don't have an answer for. The first one involved the fact that this report was coming to us in November or early now. What is today? Is it today still November, the 29th? So in November, I was correct on that statement. And last year, I believe, we didn't get this report until I believe it was February or March when we reviewed it. What what was it?
Teri Willoughby, for the record, two years ago, you received it at the very end of February. Last year, we received it, I believe, on the 30th of November. It was on time last year.
For some reason, I was thinking this board reviewed it, and I wasn't on the board last year. So maybe I'm mistaken. That's fine. Okay. So and that that's neither here nor there. The fact remains is that this is the normal time that it's supposed to come to us. Is that correct? And that's and that's why it's coming to us sooner than maybe previous years.
Teri Willoughby, for the record, and I will be covering that in my presentation as far as why I'm doing it now.
Yeah, okay. The second one relates to an item that was on the on the supplementals. And that's on page 49. It's page 49, actually, of the report, but 66 of 2317. And it regards, it says here, the assigned fund balances include amounts that are, it's paragraph three, and it said, assigned fund balances include amounts that are constrained by the county's intent to be used for a specific purpose but are neither restricted nor committed. Such intent shall be expressed by the county commission or appropriately authorized officials. The chief financial officer has been authorized by the county commission in the budget approval process to make all fund balance assignments. Constraints imposed on the use of assigned fund balances can be removed or changed without formal county commission action. For government funds other than the general fund, this is the classification for residual amounts that are not restricted, committed, or non-spendable. And so the question I got from the public was, number one, when did that occur? And number two, why is it appropriate for the chief financial officer to be making those decisions versus the county manager? And I'm just bringing these for the I'm just trying to get answers for the for the for the public here. Teri, it's so it's.
And Teri Willoughby, for the record, the assigned fund balances are typically within special revenue funds. So for example, the room tax fund, that entire fund balance is is assigned or can only be used for culture and recreation purposes. So I'm not making that determination. It's already been set up by the type of revenue that the board has authorized. In the general fund, there are some assigned fund balances typically dealing with the sheriff's department where they have received a donation, and you have said at that time that it was you accept, we accept the donation, and it's to be used for this purpose. But it doesn't particularly always have board approval. But it's typically a donation that's restricted for that.
Thank you. I I just wanted to make sure we had that on the record for the public so that they understood the process there. Thank you. Nothing else, Mr. Chair.
One of the things that was mentioned in this report was that the audit went smooth. And Ms. Willoughby, this is commendable because of what you have accomplished. When you came in, the financials for the county were basically a mess. And we had a hard time doing our first budget that year. And all the work that you and your staff have done, and along with the auditors, is just a magnificent amount of work in pulling these things together. Because it's been a monumental task. It's still not over, but we're so far ahead of what it used to be. And last year's budget process went very smooth. So on behalf of this commission, and the Audit Committee, and all the citizens of this county, kudos to you and your staff. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I do wish to acknowledge my team, my finance manager, Jenny Cartwright, accounting operations, Stephanie Weston, senior accountant, Carolyn Cheffo, senior accountant. Steph Altamirano, and our accountant Terry Olson. They've all worked really hard, as have all of my staff. And the auditors have been great. They are always responsive. I was getting emails at midnight from one of the audit of their audit team, and it was like, well, and you just don't see that kind of service anymore. So I appreciate all of it.
Well, this is the way to run a railroad, and you're doing a good job. So um, I've got a one other question. In the detail, towards the end, there are several projects that you're working on. And uh, they list you as the primary responsible person for all of this. And it just seems like an awful lot. Uh, are you comfortable with that?
Terry Willoughby for the record, I believe you're talking about the audit findings and the response. I do take responsibility, but the county management team, we work as a team, and we review those findings in three and six months from now. And I work with them, and all of the county managers within our count, the managers within the county are all very willing and helpful and want to resolve these findings. Everything, even if it's not complete, I know there's some IT things that are still lingering on, but everything's in progress. So I'm very pleased with that and the way we work together.
Well, your work is instrumental, and we got the best darn county in the state of Nevada. So thank you very much. Are there any further questions? Mr. Maxwell?
Uh, David Maxwell, chairman of the Audit Committee, just for the record. Uh, is there any other questions from the Audit Committee on the CAFER or the A A C F E R?
Uh, none. Again, I'm with you. I'm very pleased to see how we're moving ahead with taking care of all of the uh um. Repeat writer, that's always been a bugaboo for me, so I'm very excited about that. And I just mentioned, Terry, when I got in here, that I've come from other municipalities where they weren't quite as um responsive. I'm very grateful.
Any other comments? Okay, good. Thank you. Well, I'll pass it off to the Chairman of the County Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. Thank you, sir. Well. If there's no further questions or comment, Terry, you're excused. Thank you for the presentation and the.
We need to uh.
We need to, we need to have a vote on this.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the Douglas County Fiscal Year twenty twenty twenty-one Annual Comprehensive Financial Report as presented.
Second that, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion by Commissioner Rice, a second by Commissioner Gardner. All those in favor signify by voting aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried four zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Now you can be excused. Good work, Terry. I mean, it's been a lot. All right, we'll have closing public comments. At this time, public comments will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and the control of the Board of Commissioners, or those agenda items where public comment has not already been taken. The floor is now open for public comment. Seeing none from chambers. Ann, anything on Zoom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is no online public comment at this time, and Damian for the record.
Any further comment from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rice?
Ms. Willoughby, uh, did you have something that you wanted to present to us that you were unable to before?
Ms. Willoughby?
I do have a presentation, and I'd be happy to present it.
So a little bit about why the name changed. It was mentioned before. Um, the common pronunciation of the former acronym or CAFER um sounds like a profoundly objectional racial slur in another language. As a GASB's or the Governmental Accounting Standards Board sets standards for ninety thousand state and local governments, but they are part of the local financial community, global financial committee, they issued a statement, as was mentioned, to change the name to the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and its acronym. We're calling it the ACFER for now. Um, a little bit about why, we mentioned why we bring it in November. NRS three fifty-four point six two four says um we have to have an annual independent audit. The annual audit must be concluded, and the report of the audit submitted to the governing body not later than five months after the close of the fiscal year. So that would be our close is June thirtieth, so that would be November thirtieth. So that's why we're bringing it here. And just so you know, last year was the first time it was ever in compliance with that. You are able to get extensions, but it's not great. And then we have to submit the opinion and findings of the auditor um within thirty days of the receipt of the report. And we file it as a public record with the county clerk and the State Department of Taxation. Uh, it's a single audit is is not submitted to the state of Nevada. It is only submitted to the federal government, and that has a separate deadline of March thirty-first of the next year. Again, we had a clean opinion. I'll skip through some of this. Um, purpose of the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report is to provide accurate and meaningful information concerning the county's financial condition and performance. The program, which is started by the Government Finance Officers Association, encourages state and local governments to go beyond minimum requirements to ensure transparency and full disclosure, and that users of the financial statement have comprehensive information needed to assess the financial health of the local government. It is reviewed by GFOA professional staff and experts in public sector financial reporting, prepares independent auditors, academics, and other finance professionals. Um, as you may have seen in the recent press press release, we did receive uh the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for last year fiscal year's um report. Uh, there's four main sections. The introductory section, which includes the transmittal letter, which has information about the county, local economy, relevant financial policies, and major initiatives. The financial section, the independent auditors' report, the management's discussion and analysis, which is a summary of all the financial reports, basic financial statements, government-wide fund financials, notes to the basic financials, and other supplemental information, statistical section, which is in the back, it's a ten-year history of financial demographic and economic statistics. And then the single audit, which will be brought back to you at a later date. Um, the management's discussion and analysis is a summary of the financial reports. If you read nothing else, read this. Uh, provides a narrative introduction, overview and analysis of the basic financial system statements, condensed comparative data from the government-wide statements, overall analysis, fund analysis, budgetary highlights, capital asset and debt administration information, and other significant factors that may affect it the county now and into the future. Basic financial statements, uh, the first ones are government-wide. This brings together the information for the entire county and brings together information previously spread across different funds. So it's going to take general fund and the water fund and everything and puts it all together. Governmental funds are, and they're funds that are on different accounting bases bases and put them together in a sing similar reporting manner. So governmental funds, which are on modified accrual, which is like cash basis almost, they are adjusted to reflect full accrual. And propriety and proprietary and fiduciary funds, which are like um our utility funds, enterprise funds that are running more like a business, and those are reported as business-type activities. Statement of net assets provides the same information that you would see in a balance sheet for a business. Assets are presented in order of liquidity. Liabilities are presented in the order of their relative maturity, when they are expected to be paid off. Net assets are divided into three components, invested in capital assets, which is the difference between the amount shown as capital assets and the debt that's outstanding, whether it was used to finance those assets. Restricted are resources that are constrained for a particular purpose. Donation, legislation, uh, things that would be in NRS that would say you can't use this money except for this purpose. Unrestricted is everything else. Statement of activities, this would be similar to an income statement you would see in a business, provides detail on how a government finances its services, provides detail for governmental activities, business type, and then the total government. Expenses report is include costs that have been incurred during the year regardless of whether the cash changed hands or not. So it's whenever the service was provided or the goods were received. Program revenues are revenues directly linked to the functions like public safety or community development. These are tied, these are considered program revenues. There are resources that are generated in the process of providing a service or operating a part of the government. Net cost of service, the upper right-hand portion of the statement of activities reveals the degree to which functions or programs are self-financing. So you would take, it's basically expenses less the program revenues. General revenues uh show the degree to which each program and functions rely on taxes and other general revenues. These are not generated by a specific program, but um these would include all taxes and other general revenues. Again, the change in net assets is. The revenue, the net of the expense minus general minus revenue plus the general revenue equals a total change in net assets for the period. This is like our profit or loss for the business or governmental activities. There are also fund financial statements, governmental funds, which which would have a but a balance sheet and statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances would include the general fund, special revenue, which is like room tax, um, senior services fund, um, some of the other ones, the debt service funds, we have one debt service fund, and capital projects. This would be like the RTC fund is included in the capital project. And some of the ad valorem capital projects where we receive property taxes that are restricted for capital use only. Proprietary funds are enterprise and internal service funds. Um, enterprise fund would be like water utility, sewer utility. Um, and internal service would be like fleet services, risk management, and our self-funded dental. And then again, notes to the basic financial statements are after that. There are three types of note disclosures. One provides description of accounting methods, policies, and choices. How did we come up with these numbers? It talks about these would be, the first note disclosure is a sample of that, a summary of significant accounting policies. Talks about how we accrue revenue, how we make our estimates. Provides additional detail or explanation of the amounts in the financial statement. Example, capital assets are only shown on the financial statement as one line item, but there's a footnote that details it out by infrastructure, water and sewer, and government, and also breaks it up between governmental and business activities. It also presents amounts that would otherwise, not otherwise meet the definition of financial information, such as construction or significant commitments. It's, we don't record all of our contracts as liabilities, so they're outstanding purchase orders, but they are noted in this footnote because it's useful information to the reader. Typical note disclosures, cash deposits, investments, contingent liabilities, significant effective events occurring after the end of the fiscal year. One example would be we, um, in the subsequent event, we had changed on July first and from the Nevada pool insurance by word action, and so that was recorded as a subsequent event because it's of interest to readers. Annual costs and net obligations of pensions and other post-employment benefits, debt service requirements to maturity, capital assets and long-term liabilities, and interfund balances and transfers. Um, some of the financial highlights, you can see our current assets increased quite a bit from prior year. And of that one hundred and fifty-two million, one hundred and thirty-four million consists of cash. Capital assets increased from two hundred and forty-five million to two hundred and fifty-four million. And again, you can see the subsequent increase in net position. This is informational only. This is summary between of all the different categories uh between last year and this year and the change for your information. And again, netting, the net position increased twenty-nine million. For the general fund, if you look at this, this is our original budget, the final budget and our actual budget. And you can see there's some big swings. It looks like we didn't know how to budget, but we were very conservative going into fiscal year twenty twenty-one because when we set that budget, we were right in the middle of COVID, and we wanted to make sure we were had a stable financial future. So we did end up in a very positive note in the general fund. And see, so this is the growth of reserves from twenty sixteen. The green is unassigned, so it's available for budgeting. And you can see it's grown quite a bit since twenty sixteen due to prudent financial decisions by the board. Um, fund balance coverage, Douglas County Policy three hundred point two one, the county will maintain a minimum level of unassigned fund balance equivalent to two months of regular ongoing operating expenditures, including transfers out to other funds. You can see our coverage has increased from fiscal year seventeen eighteen. This is one, though, represents a number of months here, from one point oh nine, and now we're at three point six nine. So we are doing very well. Capital assets, you can see the primary um. You can see the increase in capital assets. Eight million prime, uh, some of the larger projects were the cave rock system, cave rock water system improvements, and the North Valley wastewater treatment plant completed during the fiscal year. And again, long-term liabilities slightly increased due to the uh in the new borrowing for the SRF loan that was authorized for the board, and also, but some of that was decreased due to routine payments. And we're well within our debt margin. And that's the auditors' reports. Um, I put this on here. There's touring the financial statements. There's some good articles if anybody's interested and gives them more information. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Willoughby. Uh, any questions from the board? Commissioner Gardner?
I just have a quick question. On the uh, on the amount of reserves, uh, is there a maximum that we're allowed by by NRS in regards to our reserves?
No, there's limits. It's allowable that are subject to labor negotiations, but there's not a maximum that you would carry. I'll defer to Zach.
Thank you, Terry. Zach Wadley, DA's office. There are labor-related considerations with respect to the fund balances and not much to carry going forward and what's available for negotiation. Um, I agree with Terry. There's not necessarily a limit as to what you could uh hold going forward. However, it would impact uh the amount of of money available to negotiate over with our various unions.
Good point.
And Terry Willoughby for the record, we will be bringing a financial plan with some projections um as far as how that might be used.
Mr. Maxwell, do you have any questions?
David Maxwell, chairman of the Audit Committee. Uh, any other questions from the Audit Committee today?
None from Tim McCoy. Thanks.
Great. Seeing none, and we have none.
You know, Terry, you've been wrestling with the financials for this county for, what, three years now? And when you walked into this buzzsaw, you know, you mentioned one of the things that the capital assets increased. Is there anything that you recall that was like a surprise during this period as you started to wade through the problems of the financial records?
Terry Willoughby for the record, no, I don't think it surprises. I think it's bringing everybody together and getting collaboration on the financial data that we need and why it's important that departments work with us. And I think we have a good understanding of that now.
Well, you got in here post-Tiregate, which was a huge embarrassment for the county. And it's a great comfort to know that you're at the point now where those kinds of anomalies would be spotted real quick and addressed. So, this is why the numbers are so important. And to have good numbers from the standpoint of not only just running the county, but also, it helps us in the budgeting process. Because I can remember Judge Young standing at that podium and saying, "Wow, you're telling me what numbers I can use? And I can adjust them?" Because before, he was just told what he was going to use for the courts. So, you've really brought the county a long way. So, it's a lot of work, and you deserve the accolades with your staff. Wrapping your arms around it. Thank you. Well, seeing no further questions or comments, now you are excused. And everybody else is too. So, this meeting is now adjourned.